Six thirty, we'll call the council beating to order and the first order of business is the roll call and so we're joined today by council member Frazek, council member Dominguez and Mayor Pro Tim McFarren. Uh council member Martinez and council member Schultz have been excused and cannot be here tonight. So first up is order item number two, uh approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda, which is the city council minutes uh from last meeting, uh the clerk treasurer reports for um March two thousand twenty-five and the clerk treasurer report for April two thousand twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, we'll move on to item number four, which is the beer and liquor licensure. This is a twelve-month class D retail alcohol license for Puebla Mexican restaurant expiring September fourth, two thousand twenty-six. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Is there any reports?
No.
Okay.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, you were all aware of the motion. Is there motion, or all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and we will move on to item number four, uh reports. Uh first up is the city engineer and information in the city manager's report. So anything further uh that we need to be aware of from the city engineer? Okay. Then we'll move to the city manager's report. Um and um this afternoon I had a chance to talk with the city manager and told her that I liked the format uh that she used this month for her report. So uh any questions or concerns for the city manager?
Uh I had a question about the staffing stuff, but I think it's on the agenda, so I can wait for that.
Okay, alright. Anything to add to your report?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then we will move on also in the packet as the public works report and the water and sewer reports. Are there any um questions or concerns regarding those reports? Hearing none, we'll go on to five C committee reports. The only thing that I'll mention is that the Fire Protection Agency uh will have a meeting on uh September eleventh. I believe is the date, next Monday evening um at six thirty at the fire station. I will not be present, but I think the other three members representing the city will be there. Uh and again, that's an open meeting, so anyone in the public that's interested can attend that as well. Next up is item number uh six, vendor voucher claims. Um A vendor voucher claim list number one in the amount of two hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Seconds.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and we'll move to six B library pre-claim uh paid claims in the amount of eight thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and we will move to item number seven, public comments and correspondence. This is the time for the public to uh um talk or bring issues before the council that are not on the agenda and that we ask that you uh keep your comments to no more than two minutes and you choose state your name and address. Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to uh item seven, uh two, um city council comments and or correspondence. We'll start with the mayor pro Tim.
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, council member Dominguez.
Uh I have a few things just to report. I attended the ISAC company this morning as well. Um there was a very, very big turnout. There's also an opportunity for any enlisted officials that have time to um go tomorrow morning at eight thirty as well. Um and if you need information, I'm happy to provide that. Um also got feedback about our um our water bills or not water, I call it water utility bills. Um and I talked to uh city clerk earlier about um just a little bit of explanation of the the rate changes that we approved and um I tried to explain it the best why lies or even rate hikes. Um I tried to explain it the best I could with inflation just costs more to keep you a utility um kept up. Um that you know, unfortunately, that's what we had to do, but please, if I'm misspoken, please let me know. Um um from what um state clerk said earlier, it looks to be like there was an average about fifteen to twenty-five dollar um increases across the board. Um so you know, that's what folks would expect. Also, you know, July, August are always the highest. Um and I really do appreciate the little graphs that um we get in our bills to show kind of compared to last year, how our usage was compared and everything. Another comment I got was um but look at Iowa City, look at City Rapids, are their utilities are so much less and I thought that um I understood this, but let me, please tell me if I'm wrong, that will they share the cost among thousands and thousands of users and people? I don't know if that's correct, but I'm in my head that is. Um when you're a small rural community who is creating your own energy and and trying to maintain that, especially a reminder that I know there is a little bit of a a cost increase for folks that don't live within the city to use our utilities, but I don't quite think that makes up for um the cost and everything. We serve like what, ten thousand or so or anybody know what the utility is?
For how many people we serve as far as customers?
Yeah.
Um we're under two thousand eighteen seventy-five is the bill, like the number of house.
Oh, housing.
You have more people.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The bills that are sent.
Yeah.
Eighteen seventy-five.
Okay, so but a lot of them goes to our folks that live in the suburbs, right? Cause we don't be served them as well.
So.
I call them suburbs, we're not a big city, but.
So the 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 some developments that are outside of our city limits, then we just serve um water
Water.
and sewer to some of the developments.
Okay.
Um so they're on a different electric company. Um and so for us primarily, and again, our electric costs are, I mean, you this year because we've had unusually hot temperatures. Um so this last bill is still reflecting, it's more or less the electric that's still reflecting um due to those costs because um the fuel to and you you put our cost even to the wholesale, it's just the offset to that, so.
Yep, and to me, it makes sense. I live in a really small home, but I remember my bill being really high and it was about twenty-five dollars, um the highest, you know, the peak around this time for me as well, so. It's complicated and I know that um folks might be having issues like getting that payment in or whatever, so um and I confirmed this with Sherry earlier, just if you feel like you're not gonna make your payment, please contact the city in advance so they can work with you. They have so a couple of different options um for that. Another thing I saw online is um issues with with no notification about the digging on Sixth Street. Um I don't know if the city got those complaints directly, but I just wanted to remind folks to just please call the city directly. Um it of course, I I you know, I won't ever bash anybody for for free the free speech and and putting things out there that they need to voice their concerns, but it also really I've learned helps to just call the city and talk to folks directly, even if it's a complaint and there's no like final or um immediate resolution. At least you can get your voice directly to the city to to make those complaints and those concerns and most of the time you can get some more contacts and and information back too. Um and then, sorry, it's a long, I've been busy here.
Sure, yeah.
Um oh, and then I also I court, well, I saw the correspondence from the fire chief, but we have that on the agenda, so we can talk about that. Also, Lee gave me a great tour of um the new the new offices and stuff and it looks really great and you, the staff has been doing incredible job and working really hard, so I think the I think that'll be great for the staff when we are able to transition over here. And that was it, I think.
And I just remind, um council member Dominguez, all council members, um for the public, um your resolution um for the rates, um it identified um the purpose for the water and increase. And so if you need to refer back to that to share with the public when they're asking questions, um we had put that information, um talking about the capital improvement projects and that Sixth Street project and all of that in lieu of infrastructure upgrades. So if anytime that's helpful, then you can refer back to that information with the public as well.
Okay.
So that's good.
Council member Frazek.
I had the same things that council member Dominguez had on the concern from the public about the utility rates and that and that from the firing stuff. We explained that pretty well, I think.
Yeah.
Move to uh to uh the city manager for comments and correspondence.
Yeah, um so correspondence that I received, um the only one that I have been communicating with is um a private owner um regarding um the project that came through with the conduit placement. And um I've provided a follow-up with the individual and given them um the contractor's contact information, their insurance bonding and just instructions on what to do and um also provided that if anybody else feels that their property has been damaged, to reach out and we can provide them the same information. And just as a public reminder, just as council member Dominguez, you know, is saying, you know, when those things happen, you know, go to the source, contact the city. Um the the project itself was approved for the construction based on plans. This is a larger um a utility company that needed to um place conduit for future um utility for the future pieces of the utility going in, so it's more of a it's a beginning of a bar of a larger project. But at the same time, there were some steps that we are communicating with Lumen, um the company that is um engineering the project and will continue to stay in contact with them um simply to because um the contractor that they were working with has, you know, disrupted a lot of private uh properties and um you know, there was a limited amount of time where our utility staff got notified about the project through the one call located, so I've reached out to them, um included our utility staff and asked that before they proceed any further that we have a construction meeting and that we go over um you know, the situation that occurred in our city limits. It sounds like it it's happened in another community as well, so but we gotta take care of West Liberty and and we'll continue to work with them to get it corrected, so. Um outside of that, I I didn't receive anything about fires, so that's the only one that I have.
Okay. So the clerk?
Um I had already told you Bill and Kurt come to me today and she received a phone call from the advocate press communicating that he has tried to reach out to the council members regarding the election and just wanted to remind you if you could to respond to him with those questions.
Moving on then to new business, item number eight, A um discussion and appropriate action by the city council of West Liberty, Iowa on the upgrade for the chlorine room in at the water treatment plant. And you have the information in the packet and the recommendation of staff that we approve um these changes, so is there a motion to approve?
Uh I make motion to go ahead and approve in order to meet compliance.
Is there a second?
Seconds.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in, uh it is a roll call, so the clerk will call the roll.
Frazek?
Yes.
McFarren?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Alright, um then we have uh A B discussion and appropriate action by the city council of West Liberty on interim EMS staffing structure. Uh so first up is discussion?
Uh I can go ahead, nobody else. Um yeah, so when I was reading through the the packet, I had a couple of questions and then I saw um the fire chief's email. Um and he he answered a lot of kind of the questions that I had. Um my first question was like what kind of collaboration communication or what have you had taken place to determine this, the change? Um then a cou- another one was um there was how it was set, there there needs, it's some, there was a a void created for clarity for supervision, so I just it it wasn't really outlined on what that looked like or what the changes were in operations. Um
Those were in your job descriptions that we approved at the last.
Okay, so I would recommend that we approve the job descriptions after or we we would have
Or approve.
this first.
Yep, our council had us approve the job descriptions first.
Right, so these changes were reflected in the job descriptions before the title was changed?
There's no title change, so the job descriptions, they are still paramedics and they're still A E M T. So those titles do not change. And the job distrib- the job descriptions were updated to reflect that the individuals um with would have potential for supervisory responsibilities due to um they're the full-time employees. So therefore, their duties would expand beyond just being coming in and just doing calls. That means that they would handle scheduling, that means that they would handle uh processing payroll, processing expenditures, uh purchase and and doing the purchase uh paperwork and um credit card purchases.
Yeah.
I mean in addition, so.
Yeah.
That was why they and what this is proposing is a chain of command.
Mm-hmm.
Uh because well, it's it's communicating. I I didn't receive any email from the fire chief, so I'm not familiar with any of the.
I did, yeah, so I'm confused myself on this thing because I know what we said the last time, but it sounds like those appointments are already in, they're already positions. So I don't know why the appointment needs to happen unless it's something because of the MS side of it.
Yeah.
But also, is this something that maybe could possibly table until um I have my meeting with the committee meeting with the uh fire department, see what.
Well, I can explain to you that this is, this is not coming from me nor the mayor. This is coming from the employees. They are.
Well, there's concern on his side. I don't understand then the email that we received of their, of why there'd be concern on their side then.
I don't either.
So, but it sounds like there is.
Yeah, and I I just think more conversation needs to be had and and especially when there's a difference in chain of command. I mean, they're they're all volunteers of the same organization. They both work together as engineers.
Can I say that that we're just talking about the employees?
Right, yes, but but there's a bigger structure of where these employees still work. When you're talking about chain of command, there's an incident commander like on a scene.
But but fire chief is no longer their chain of command under the EMS service.
Right, but when they're on a scene together, that has to be determined still. They still have to work together and when there's a chief, EMS chief and a fire chief, fire chief and EMS chief, they have to know who does what and when, you know, and if there's no discussion to be had before we make that change, I think it will just cause a lot more chaos than it will to simplify things.
Well, what they're looking for is the operation of EMS only. They're not talking about going out to an accident where the fire department's on scene.
Right.
And that's great. I think that just needs to be written down specifically and so everybody um like understands it in advance.
So we're we're not able to move forward and have conversation with the ambulance or the agency until council makes a motion to either proceed. If you're not gonna proceed, then from the EMS side of the employees, that then there's no one there right now that has the a supervisory authority over the because the volunteer chief does not have supervisor authority over staffing under the city.
Right, but when.
And what what we're trying to do is.
But when the previous EMS quarter was there, there was supervisory, like it might have not been under the city or or but they did have a whole thing where I know somebody made the schedule and it wasn't the chief and somebody, you know what I mean, like there there was all these operational things where people had that that responsibility.
I don't, I don't. I don't think it was exactly like uh designated in the proper way.
Well, it was under the EMS coordinator position, which I know because I was on the ambulance board and we had to approve that.
They don't have an EMS coordinator, that's the problem. And they don't, they didn't want it.
They have the um the the officer, the appointed officer is Brett Carlson.
He's not an officer, he's.
He is an officer, I I verified that, so.
An officer of what? So just so we're clear, this information is coming directly from staff.
Okay.
This is what the staff of the EMS is asking to have in place so they can manage and operate the EMS service under the city.
Right.
Which then they should be here, which they're still under the city because this already denotes.
They're still under the city.
The EMS ambulance services, we're not talking about.
Right, we've always been under the city, so why the change now? I that's what I'm confused about.
I don't think we're changing it, we're just designating.
This is the proper chain of command.
Intrum supervisory management.
Yeah.
This allows them to have the ability to manage those things. Um because right now, they they're saying that without that chain of command, without a title, that they're they're not able to communicate at the county level, they're not able to do things um because they don't have that supervisory or title stating that they have the authority to manage um decisions and manage the operations of the EMS.
I just don't understand when that changed because it's always been so always, they they've always been able to to work well with the county and and all of that.
It's but they're not able to.
Yeah. Why?
I don't get the confusion between the department down there and then what we're what we're trying to say.
I don't.
Why is there any confusion whatsoever? If it's if it's spelled out that um specifically and that's what we need, then why is we have issues?
What is there confusion with the staff down there? Is there confusion with the fire department? Like what are you referring?
Well, it was already into the one, fire department is the chain of command, so.
Because they're no longer under the city as members.
That changed.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, this is this also, this is something we can table until we have a committee meeting with them. I mean, does it have to happen right now? So I can get a better explanation on the concerns from my committee.
Yeah, and and also to your point, Tim, like the real trustees do fund half of the ambulance, right? Still, so if they haven't been as if that's in the chief's email, it sounds like they haven't been consulted, at least a conversation.
I I have that in there. If you read through it, it tells you that part of this process is whether or not we proceed. If if you wanna table, it's fine. I'm I'm expressing this on behalf of the employees and their frustration and their inability. Um and I don't wanna go into too much conversation because we are really we're in a fine line about talking about interpersonal issues.
Mm-hmm.
And so this was brought to the mayor and I and asked for us to establish um during this time an operational where we have a chain of command and we are identifying supervisory roles.
Mm-hmm.
That is all that they are looking for in that in this in this role is to be able to have the authority and direction to be able to do that. And with that, then it's our next steps would be is again to bring it to to the other organizations to further explain why the and again, we're only talking in interim. I mean, this is can all be resolved once they can get the EMS underneath the agency.
Right.
This is simply just allowing the supervisory and because since the fire chief and that's what it's communicating. So the the city of West Liberty is no longer in a uh a partnership with the
Volunteers.
membership volunteer members. So the EMS, again, we know it's essential that we need to have those volunteers a part of that operating. However, the bigger percentage that is operating the EMS is city staff.
Yeah.
And those city staff members have to be supervised by an employee of the city. It is my understanding that Brett Carlson and Chief Sickles work very well together. They coordinate together and so therefore, I I I believe based on that relationship, um I I think that maybe that's something between Brett Carlson and and Chief Sickles to have a conversation of how they want or how they're gonna work that out and manage. If Chief Sickles wasn't aware of this information, then I mean, I'm not involved in the day-to-day operations that are going on. This was brought to us in order to resolve some some operational um things that have been going on as far as being able to order, being able to handle processing, being able to manage staff specifically.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yeah, I always thought that.
Managing schedules, managing the budget, um because again, I mean, that individual has the ability to manage, you know, the city budget. And so it's simply just stating because the fire chief no longer and and the void maybe wasn't the right word, it's just how you, they're they're no longer in that position to to supervise or manage the EMS service until once they get it back in over under, once everything goes under the agency, then the agency, I mean, then that'll be up to them to figure out how and again, I don't even know if Brett will still, I mean, he would have to be hired on as an employee of the agency at that point in time, so I don't have the ability to speak to how that operations will work.
So how would the volunteers work then? It it cause this specifically says.
But that's what he's doing now is managing the volunteers.
Right, so but this says um not just supervisor role for staff and volunteer, or for staff, but also volunteers and a lot of those, most of those volunteers, not all of them are also firefighters and so.
Correct.
It 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 to me, having two chiefs of volunteers that work together makes it really messy and like more complicated because you have to figure out what that structure now looks like and new training and like.
I can give you an example of what was communicated.
Sure. Okay.
So when when the when the paramedic and when they're on the ambulance or and they're in the ambulance service and they have a volunteer, then the position allows them to supervise that volunteer. Because the fire chief is no, this allows it to have where they can have clarity with that volunteer that they have the supervision over that individual when they're volunteering under the EMS service.
Right, but I was under the impression and understood it that it's always been that way. I mean, I remember when Tammy was the the person and she would have say, she was the top dog, you know, about EMS stuff and.
But we're not doing.
But what?
But they we used to do previously. But staff now is communicating and saying it's not working. Like it was working before, it's not working.
Okay, I think I just, to be more comfortable. Okay, I think I just to be more comfortable, I just need more clarity and I need feedback. I need to see the overall picture. That's just how I am. Um.
What what is the part of the I I.
Well, the same people that they're recommending, the same people we're recommending. So where's the rift? Me about I that's what I wanna get understand about about where.
Isn't it just formality to make sure that it is designated officially so that if there's any issues, we know that our paid staff.
It might be. It might be. I don't.
Our paid staff is the one that has that ability of authority. Now volunteers, if they're along. Again, they are volunteers. They're not paid staff. So they need on that call, I would assume to take, you know, the the. Um instruction and the you know, the. The direction of who is in charge at that staff, which is primarily responding to EMS ambulance calls, not fire calls.
Their end or our uh workers' comp while they're doing the work on the ambulance.
So are the volunteers that volunteer for EMS on our workers' comp as well?
When when they're doing the work, yes.
Only for the EMS.
But not for the fire.
So so they.
Well, there are different ones for fire.
They're under they're when they're under fire, they're under a uh a workers' comp that's provided by the agency.
Mm-hmm.
And so so this enters in and. As we did this discussion on this, this entered into uh my thinking on this of the volunteers. So if you're a firefighter. And you're not on the roster for EMS. Then you can't be. You can't do those services. Yeah, so it's you're volunteering essentially during this nine-month period for two different organizations.
Yeah. I think that's how it is now. You have to have specific training, even to drive an ambulance, you have to have EMS.
Yes, yeah, you do. Yes, but what's different is that we kept the workers' comp on those volunteers.
Mm-hmm.
That are doing it under the ambulance service. I mean, this will clarify a great deal once this is all under uh one agency.
Yeah. And I know that they're looking forward to that. Um. I know everybody's looking for it to be under the the same agency. My other question though is like the title, the specific title, like is this like common practice to have a EMS chief? And also, how does that change our ordinance that people in the top positions have to be within twenty miles of the city? Cuz I know the person.
Well, again, I mean.
Doesn't live in twenty miles within.
They no, I mean, th- these individuals weren't hired outside of that to begin with. So I mean, they've already.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they were actually hired on when they should have been in the school district. So I mean, we're beyond that point.
I think if we're speaking specifically. Per person. You know, that's different than speaking about a position in itself. So it basically this person would be the department head. Is that what I'm saying? So we have an ordinance that says department heads have to live within twenty miles, I think. So.
So so but the but the situation is is this individual is already doing the work of the department head. They're already doing the duties and they.
Oh, but there's no raise. There's no raise for this. So what's the point of changing the title?
The chain of command and that was what was recommended by the staff. In order for there to be. A clarity for supervision of the staff and the volunteers on the EMS service side. These were and I researched the titles. They are significant titles. They are correct. Um and that was the recommendation that came from staff. And again, it's. It's really complicated to go in and you know, I you know, from my position as the city manager, I.
I know, I know it's. Yeah, I.
I'm working with staff to um provide them that. That role of being recognized. Um so you know, they're not. So therefore, if an individual does not. Um take a directive or does not follow a directive or does not show up on the schedule.
Mm-hmm.
Or if that individual um. Even needs to be recognized in a positive way. I mean, at this point in time. That that's the complicated of the interim situation is that.
Mm-hmm.
That individuals doing, those individuals are doing the work. But they're not being recognized. In a supervisory role. That is causing some. Operational issues. I is the best way I can explain.
It's.
I would not have this before you.
Mm-hmm.
Unless the if the employees were actually, if everything was going well, this would not be in front of you.
Mm-hmm. No, I believe you and that and I'm concerned about if there are issues and stuff and I'm also concerned about. More issues that this might bring forward cuz we're really trying to. Put everything into the agency and they're gonna have to work together eventually. Um.
Yeah, but they're still under the city. So this would be an interim time of designation.
But it doesn't say the interim time. There's.
It yeah, it isn't.
Yeah.
Specifically.
It is an interim because. I mean, it's not a date that it will end.
What's that? Do you think?
It says.
Uh in recommendation. Yeah.
July first, two thousand twenty-six.
Yeah.
Per the agreement that we signed unless there's one caveat to that uh council member and that's if the uh.
Mm-hmm.
Uh agency asks for additional time.
Yep, okay.
And it does say interim staffing appointments.
So.
Right, but I'm saying it doesn't say until July. You know, twenty twenty six.
Well, it's cooling off. Besides, I mean, it's an interim because it's cooling inciting with the original agreement when we no longer have an EMS service under the city.
Yeah. I ju- I think I just would have liked more specific details um. Like very specifically, so everybody knows what the changes are and how it's gonna change specifically and. You know, and and you can say that was in the job titles and and things like that, but.
We.
That's true.
I specifically asked during when we were gonna approve those if there were significant changes and I think uh Chief Hauser. Mentioned his specific changes and that was pretty much it. So. I.
There was just supervisory and and it was just not, it was a simplified. That they the only one sentence that changed it was uh simplifying that. They may be required to manage or super have supervisory roles. There was nothing.
Mm-hmm.
Outside of what they. I mean, I know the lead paramedic already had that in there. But we just made sure that the A M T was updated because there's times where that individual, full-time individual has to take on that.
Right, when they're the highest ranking.
Yeah.
Uh medical person, right?
I I don't know. Um again, if you wanna table it, I. I mean, I mean, I'll take that back to those employees. I mean, unfortunately, I think it's a situation where um. Maybe some feathers have gotten ruffled that doesn't necessarily need to be ruffled.
Mm-hmm.
And that I think then that's a situation too that. The employees are running up against because they're the one, they're operating. And they gotta be operating and they're not there to rumble anybody's feathers. They're there to run a service.
Mm-hmm.
And um and when you're running a service, just like all of our other departments, you have to have a chain of command.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I can tell you, it is very complicated for me to do my job working with these entities. Because. If I have a a supervisory role and I have an individual that I can directly talk with and directly manage things with and manage a budget. This is gonna get a whole lot more simplified. But right now, there's a disconnect. And the employees are feeling the stress of it and clearly the volunteers are feeling the stress of it. And so this is a solution that we're putting before council. And if you're not comfortable with it, then that's your decision and then I can go back to the employees. But. It's unfortunate that, you know, if it's been complicated for these individuals to have these conversations within that. Within that operations, I I don't know what we can offer to 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 get that corrected until they're all back under one. Under one operating roof. I'm I'm not sure.
City manager, Chris, could I ask a question um in regards to having a. Designated chain of command that is um in in place. Wouldn't we need that anyway? Because these are paid city staff and the fact that there's an issue of legality. Especially with H R that if something does happen and there's no oversight, wouldn't that be a a.
Well.
A liability at some point?
Well, I mean, again, it comes so here the the. The book stops with the city manager overall managing operations. So if there's an H R situation that occurs. I mean, without a chain of command and the management has to.
It's more complicated. Yeah, it's more complicated.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying it's it's very complicated to manage. Without being able to. Work with an individual directly to supervise staffing that's under the city. Um so here's what I'm thinking, like. I I can kind of see. How that could complicate. I can't see how that can be complicated. What's complicated, like in my mind, what's complicated too is that we do rely on volunteers on the E M S and the fire side.
Right.
Absolutely. So um. When we're thinking about supervisory stuff, there needs to be like a supervisor for our employees who are employed part-time and full-time on EMS. Also, that person, what com- gets complicated is when that person also has to. Like manage the the same volunteers. And maybe I said this already. I my it it's just kind of fumbled in my in my mind a little bit, so. I mean, I'm confident that bec- again, I go back to. Based on my understandings. Um the lead paramedic Brett Carlson, the A M T. Uh Kathy Esmoil, the full-time employees. Have a good working relationship with Chief Sickles.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not clear is to. Why they can't work together to figure out. The supervisory and the operations during this interim process.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and so I mean. I again, I go back to, I think it's bigger than all of us here at the table because it's a it's it's just in that.
Mm-hmm.
Complicated situation, but at the end of the day, it it's we still have to have. The ability to supervise and manage city staff.
Yeah, and and I think it is important like for performance reviews, like who does performance reviews and and things like that, but.
Yep.
And who handles answering the budget and. But. Right, but I feel like that could just be taken care of in the job descriptions, right?
Well, we we I mean, again, in the job description, it does have those. Those are already part of the lead paramedic. Um.
Mm-hmm.
Again, it become more complicated when the EMS coordinator. It it wasn't that we did away with the position. It was just no longer hired.
Mm-hmm.
For for. For this situation, it's how deep do we wanna go into creating new rules?
Mm-hmm.
All of this new stuff. Um where could potentially pass into hiring process.
When is this gonna change? Right.
Where. I I mean, what I communicated with the employees is that. And and they necessarily weren't comfortable with the interim word.
Mm-hmm.
But all we can offer them is interim because that service is not going to stay under the city.
Mm-hmm.
And so. This was the best that we could come up with without having to rewrite. A whole new job description without having to post and hire for that job description.
Right.
Without having to and trying to minimize ruffling any feathers.
Mm-hmm.
Um because at just like you said. For the most part, they they they've been operating this way.
Yeah.
But unfortunately. It they're not able to because one, just as stated, the fire chief is a volunteer fire chief. And is not staffed. So from a supervisory role, it takes a city staff member to supervise. Staffing and would also be supervising the volunteers.
Mm-hmm.
It's my understanding that uh they have a conversation between the chief and the lead paramedic now. If there is some issues, however.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes that can't be done in a timely manner.
Mm-hmm.
So this is why the employees are wanting to. Have a chain of command and have it identified so these things can be handled.
Yeah.
Yeah. I I'm trying to be very careful on how I approach.
No, I think I you know, I think I think how you explained it is is pretty clear and I I don't disagree with you.
No, I.
But yeah, I I'm very future. Forward-thinking and I just feel like this would be something that. Like you said, there there was no kind of laid out plan or anything of how we're gonna work in the interim and how we can manage this. And that to me feels like something that the. Agency board can talk about and can work with EMS and can work with the fireside and can work with the city folks to say. Let's create something and and.
We've.
You know.
But we may send that. We've sent.
I have. Yeah.
We provided that.
Oh, sorry.
And this is just us trying to work through those.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
These are things that come up that. On both sides, on everybody's. To everybody's credit, I mean, these are operational things that come up. After the fact, right? And so these are the things that we continue to work through and I I know the agency looks at them just the same as council's looking at them.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um. You know, the the goal is is not to. Cause any more stress on our volunteers or our staffing.
Mm-hmm.
Um because they already have enough that they're managing just. Being on the service.
Yeah.
And so. And that was why the employees had addressed it is looking to. To come to a clarity and and have these roles and so it's helps from a supervision. I can't. I can't fix if there's something more going on and there's not individuals talking with each other.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
But. This is this is what we reviewed. This is what we put together to put before you.
So. The consensus is to not move forward with the. Motion that's for the motion to be withdrawn.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to go ahead and proceed.
Okay, so there's been a motion to um to um approve the um. For on the action on the interim EMS. Is there a second? Hearing then the motion fails are uh does not proceed with a second. So we'll see what comes of the meetings and uh work on this.
I could just ask if um. If council members would provide the email communication from the fire chief.
Yeah, I have not seen.
Yeah, I'm I don't even know how to get back to my thing because new.
Yeah, I mean, it would be.
I've decided trying to go in and try to.
Me.
I thought I was.
Had.
Back to everybody. I would.
Yeah, had we just just to say, had that information had come. For me to review, then.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I would have been able to have an opportunity to talk to the EMS staff. Again. It it all it does is just take a simple sit down and have a conversation. And and we can do that. But we gotta have all the information.
Yeah, I don't have.
Just like you folks, you know, you.
And I think that's my concern is like I've got. Ninety percent of it probably, but my. Uh doubt there's still that hint of doubt out there and I know. The process this is is taking have taken so long because I mean of the back and forth. I don't wanna see anything. Stall this even next year when we come to.
Right.
Move EMS stuff over there and all that stuff. I want that to be. A smooth transition. So I just need to understand why the concern. And but I do see the city side of it, understand that part of it. So thank you for explaining that. I guess we'll get some more answers and then I'm hoping we can relook at this soon.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Kelly. Hundred percent.
Well, I I made the statement, the workers' comp issue is important to me because we've I feel. For that, we've got to have a clear chain of command. So and and like uh. Council member Perezic, I want this moving forward uh as quickly as possible.
I think it's the one thing, are you guys tabling it and bringing it back? Are you guys completely denying it?
Yes.
Because the way that it's written, you have the discussion, the motion, the consent with Council Mayor for time McFerrin.
Motion.
Put forward towards you. That did not go. So what are you doing?
Can I make another motion to table? I'll motion to table it for um future meeting.
Yes. Okay, is there a second? Second. Okay, and it's a consent vote. Um is there further discussion? No, we've already had discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, so I'll move on um.
Yep, so just send the uh Chief Sickles email and then we'll we'll go back at it and and work with those.
Wait a minute. The motion by Councilmember Dominguez did not does not um. There is no motion that was approved by council tonight. That one.
So that is that will be what is documented is that there was a motion that was passed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, alright. So then we move on to uh A C um date for public hearing on the ordinance uh. Okay, alright. So then we move on to uh A C, um date for public hearing on the ordinance uh amending the code of ordinance of the city of West Liberty by amending provisions pertaining pertaining to the fire department. So setting a date for this, uh are we okay with October seventh at six thirty P M?
And just so everyone is aware, we have to change our ordinance because we are no longer, the fire department is no longer under it thus, so we will reference the point you within that. It's a very short ordinance change, the other stuff will be removed out of there.
So this is consensus and I'm not hearing any opposition to October seventh at uh six thirty. Okay, uh A D, uh set a date for public hearing on an ordinance amending the code of ordinance of of the city of West Liberty by amending provisions obtaining pertaining to the lease law. And again, October seventh, six thirty, consent? Not hearing any objections to that. We'll move on to A E. Set a date for a public hearing on the ordinance amending provisions pertaining to fireworks for October seventh, two thousand twenty-five. This is because the legislature further um opened up use of fireworks. So any um objections to October seventh at six thirty P M?
We will not have fireworks on that date, just the public, just figuring.
Okay. So then we are to A F, preview of the council meeting. Um I think I've told people I will be in Belize uh the sixth through the eleventh are the fourteen sitting people with eyeglasses. Uh so I will be back um uh by the council meeting on the sixteenth. And it sounds like we'll have further discussion regarding EMS uh services. Uh council member Preisek will have more of a uh idea of what uh concerns uh are being raised in that regard. Um outside of that, uh I can't think of anything else that's major um that we need to preview. Okay. Alright, um next up is item number nine, authorization and approval confidentiality agreement regarding uh electric transmission planning and construction and critical inter uh energy infrastructure. Uh so is there a motion to approve?
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
Within the packet that we gave you, there is a memo inside of there on page two.
Yeah.
Where it said motion language, whoever makes the motion, I need you to read that.
Use that language.
Exactly that way. That one was page two, it's a motion like, yeah, it's a motion language. And within that, you will have, you will use that first portion at the bottom where it says. I can do it.
Okay. Council member Dominguez is recognized for a motion.
Thank you. So I'll motion to authorize and approve the confidentiality agreement by and between I P P A, M R E S, N I M E C A, S I M B C A and such cities, municipal electricity, electric utilities, joint action, sorry, joint action agencies and or electric power agencies, which are or in the future become a signatory to the agreement regarding electric transmission planning and construction and critical energy infrastructure. And to authorize and direct the mayor and clerk to execute and deliver the confidentiality agreement.
It's been moved, is there a second? Second, is there a discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
McFerrin? Yes. Preisek?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes three zero.
Okay, item number ten, potential participation in the I P P A hyphen M I S O grant sheet, uh two point one transmission project. Um it's a potential close session. Um uh item uh I uh A would be uh enter into a close session pursuant to Iowa code sections twenty-one point five parentheses one in parentheses parentheses A um thirty-three, eight, eight, nine, uh parentheses one in parentheses and twenty-one point five parentheses A in parentheses parentheses K in parentheses to review and discuss records that are uh uh required or authorized by state and federal law to be kept confidential uh to discuss proprietary information and information requested by a non cus- uh customer uh contracting party to be kept confidential pursuant pursuant to a nondisclosure agreement which relates to electric transmission planning and construction and critical in energy infrastructure and to discuss information contained in records in the custody of a governmental body that are confidential records pursuant to section twenty-two point seven, subsection five zero. Uh is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I have a question and sorry, I have not had time to read through this, cause we just got it. But well, is there a statement showing what that law says that stated what the actual law is?
For the closed session?
Yeah, just because like I I remember our city attorney specifically telling us why we can go in the closed session and I don't remember something like this being for that, or maybe she's online, you can.
Yeah, it it is in there saying that um the closed session is pertaining to um a a government body entering into a confidential um agreement.
And provided by the code sections that I read off.
And that has to do with the confidentiality of a.
Is it pri- proprietary information or?
Council member Dominguez?
Yes.
To your memo.
Yes.
Below that motion language, this is coming directly from the attorney where it says I ju- the agenda item, these code sections are within the section of twenty-one point five, which is your closed session area. And then those words that are below it to review or discuss and then further down, those are the reasons why we are going into closed session. So all of those items within there after those code sections where it says to review or discuss records which are required to authorize all the way down, that is the information that is within those sections.
Okay, so this, okay, that makes me more comfortable if the lawyer wrote all that, yes.
Yes, the the agenda items came directly from the attorney.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh is there no further discussion? Clerk will call the roll.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Preisek?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Need to enter into close station, so um we will exclude but yes. We are out of close session and we are at item uh ten Z. And um so I would entertain uh if there are any motions from the council uh following the closed session.
Um Mister Mayor, I'll go ahead and make the motions. Uh that the electric utility shall continue working towards participation in the I P P A and MISO trench two point one transmission projects and submit a project participation nomination amount of fifteen point two million with possibility of a supplemental at fifteen million to be considered uh later.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Preisek?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Alright, we are now to city manager, I think, at something.
Yes, Mister Mayor, I have um one thing, a couple things. Uh quickly, the University of Iowa clinics contacted uh mayor's staff today and let us know that they've been approved to do two more local clinics. So September twentieth and October when he, yeah, I think two, um oh, October twenty-fifth. And these will be eleven A M to three P M here at the uh city administrative building. Um they did say they had thirty-seven participants and they were able to serve everyone in the um July
Great.
event. And then in my city manager, I just have the flyers talking about the economic uh development, the small communities forums. So if you want information on that, it'll be here for you. Mayor's gonna attend.
Yeah.
Still, yeah, still, we stay, we lead economic development director will be attending as well. Okay, thank you.
With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and we are adjourned.